Comments from the public at this time? Anybody wishing to address them or may do so at this time?
Yes, Paul. Do I have to stand?
No.
Good. I'm Paul Duffy. This is on Seventy-Nine Lake Street. I think you all know that. Right next to West Liquor Store. I just wanted to bring up the parking, the winter parking ban issue. I've lived there for twenty years and I'm really tired of having to move my car every night, very late, and then having to move it extremely early in the morning. Twenty years has taken a toll. I don't know if you would address this issue every year or not. I request that you address the issue. See if there's something else you can do. My home, it's been a family home for since the late thirties or early forties, seventy years or so. There is no parking. Absolutely no parking. You cannot drive a vehicle between the buildings. The house takes up twenty of the thirty feet. I cannot park in front of the house in the wintertime. I don't know if it's a question of the values of the home. Would anybody steer my home in the village if you were told you have no place to park? I've been able to park for a number of years in the Holland Parking Lot. Grand Union saved a lot. We all know that parking lot. It's always been a problem. It's a problem for them for plowing, which is why when we have been able to put it over there, we've never been able to put it over there technically. It's always been banned, but they haven't pushed it. So they've allowed people to do that for a number of years. They have finally stopped that. They will not allow anybody to park in there. They've blocked one of them up. They've told us ahead of time that we're not being allowed to park in there. Can't blame them, but that leaves a number of us in a pickle. What do I do with my vehicle? I don't know what the village policy is on the village parking lots. And even if we're allowed to park in those overnight, it's still a very impractical thing to do. I've been willing to do it as it was my own home. Someday if I move out there and I want to rent it, how do you tell a prospective tenant that, "Well, you really haven't got a place where you can put a car"? I'm speaking mostly for myself. I'd like to throw in words for other people. I know Mr. O'Connell at Liquor Store has two apartments in the back. His place has been there a long time. He has no parking. He cannot get to the back. He has to go onto David's property. There's two apartments. Generally, people, I think, in general, most families have two cars. That means there's four cars in that building right next to me that have no place to go. I have noticed this past week that the village parking lot behind Sandy's Old Time Cafe seems to be full. Apparently, that's where all the cars are going. I don't know what the village policy is on that. As far as the, I know, they came out and they put a flyer on our, on all the cars that were left on Lake Street this past week or the week before, warning everybody that the ban was on. My cars weren't out there. I've always tried to get them on. And on the, on the, notice it speaks of for plowing purposes and so there's no damage done to the vehicles. Well, the no damage done to the vehicles is kind of ludicrous because the plows go by all day with cars on the street. And apparently, it's not a problem during the middle of the day. So I don't really know why it's a problem at night that the cars will get damaged. I don't, I think that's kind of foolish. They, and I haven't lived there for twenty years. I know when the plows go out. And there were a few years when they used to go out and they cleared that street, the village did, before six o'clock, when there were no cars there because of the ban. They have done that for a number of years. So I don't know that the village is doing any extra plowing during those closed hours. So I don't really see the point of it there either. I just would like the village to understand that you maybe don't see it, but it does create hardship. I've got, I've got, my wife, you know, what do we do with our vehicles? You've got a, you've got a small family there. It's, it's, I have to say it's devalued the home. Again, I would say, how many of you would buy a home in the village if you were told you cannot park your car anywhere here next to your home? I don't believe that Pat and I are the only ones with a problem. I'm not sure about that, but there's got to be something else we can do. I know it's, this law was passed many years ago. I think it was like that when I moved there, which is twenty years. I like to think it's time to try something else. I know Plotsburg, Burlington have the flashing lights. You get stretches of weather in the winter here where there's no snow for a long time and yet we can't park there. So we're being chastised kind of for the sake of snow every now and then. It's a hardship. The system Plotsburg has, I don't know if that system is in conjunction with something else, but where they, and I think you're probably all aware of that, where they have the lights on certain corners around the city. There are lights in when they have snow coming in, when they know there's a storm coming in, but lights go on. They're very, they show very well. You can't miss them and people know they have to get their cars off. That would work fine with me. I mean, even though I still haven't got a place to put it, you could, you could ask your next-door neighbor if you could park in their driveway on rare occasion. But you can't go to your neighbor and say, "Can I park in your driveway all the time? Every night?" You just can't do it. So what do we do? I can't solve it. It's a village law. I'd like you to try to look into it. Try to do something. We've got to have a break.
Have you talked to anybody else? Like, what about the place right across the old Mary's building?
It's imprac, it's, you're still, you're still talking something that's impractical. You're still, what does he do for insurance? When we go ask you if we can park in there short, that's what happens when somebody gets hurt, when they slip. Whose insurance is it? His? Is he going to, is he going to give us that out of kindness of his heart and risk insurance? Lawsuits, things like that? It's just, that's not practical. We need a place to park.
Previously, when you were parking in the grocery store parking lot, did that property owner have insurance?
That side, that property has been posted. All the years I've been there, no overnight parking.
But they've been aware, because it's been for many years, I would imagine.
Well, you know, the owner is not from here. It's from Vermont. It's always been a problem. And the biggest problem over there as far as us parking there is that when they, when the people plow it in the morning in the winter, if those cars are now, they'll have to get called back to plow it a second time. Have the people been aware that people park in there? Sure, I'm sure they are. Just like the malls in Plotsburg, people park overnight. And they're aware that some people park there overnight. They don't, you know, they, if it doesn't create a problem, they're just trying to let it slide by. And that's what's happened here. I think they, I thank them for letting us park there for all these years. But that's over.
There would be no way to work out with them, a way to arrange that?
They, they came over and they, they went to Mr. O'Connell and told him there would be, would be no parking. I believe Mr. O'Connell talked to them and they said no. I believe he tried to work out something with them. Rental something, and it doesn't work. They said no. And I would still go back to the fact that this has been a family home for seventy years. The village, because of the law, I'm not blaming anybody, that's how things happen. I know it was the easiest thing to do. We have a problem plowing, okay. Let's say nobody can park on the street and that's all our problem. Yeah, but you just put the problem on all your, on all the people who live in the village. You, you, you dump the problem on our shoulders because it's easy.
Well, it wasn't easy. We issued thirty-five tickets last week. It's no stop. And that wasn't just Lake Street. That's every street in the village.
I'm sorry, I don't get the point there.
Well, and what I'm saying, the parking ban is not just for Lake Street.
No, I understand, I understand that.
Everybody in the village. And if you were driving a snowplow, especially at night, and you've been on that plow twelve, fourteen hours, sometimes you go down through there, you know, and then you have a major snowstorm and you've got a high bank and they don't see your car and that wind takes your car out.
I don't know, I don't know how you have those high banks in the, in the village. In any event, we're talking about in the village where the plows shouldn't be going terribly fast.
Well, tell that to the state. The state plows that road.
That's Lake Street.
Yeah. The state plows that. We don't plow.
Okay, but is it the state that's done this?
Well, the state don't like it either anymore, anymore than Mr. Palmer didn't want you to park in that tractor lot for a simple reason of snow removal.
Yes, I understand the state doesn't like it, but have, have they created the law that says we can't park there?
No, I don't think they have.
Okay, so I'm not addressing the state because the state hasn't told me. I'm addressing the village, because the village has told me I can't park there.
Why couldn't we try alternating?
Well, if you want to spend the money, put lights up like the city did and a radio control, so they sit there and say, "All right, tonight the lights are flashing on this side of the street, so you do not park on this side. The next time there is snowstorm, the lights are flashing on this side of the street. So you don't park on this side." It's called over the park. And that's the way to make it work.
The, I, I'm not sure how the, how the city of Plotsburg or Burlington does, but the alternating parking, the, I've always thought that when the lights came on, there was simply no parking. To say when the lights come on, there's alternating parking, now you've got to have rules.
City Burlington has alternate.
Now you've got to have rules up all over as to what side or what day or where you can park.
The way it works in City of Burlington, that I know of, the lights are both sides of the street. If these are flashing on this side, you don't park on it.
Okay.
And if these are flashing on this side, you don't park on this side. Or if they turn them all on, I guess you don't park anywhere.
I mean, we got a small village, but I was just wondering if, is it possible, you know, because he's got, on Lake Street, obviously, there's people that have a particular case, like no parking at all. It's not as if he's got a choice. He's got to know the place to put his car. And his house was there before probably the street was there. So if we put, is it, is it a possibility for alternating parking, like whether he wins these entreaties or whatever, on one side of the street and then the alternate?
Anything's possible, John. Anything's possible. But before you do anything on State Pratt and Chantilly Street, I would check with the state DOT.
Yeah. We got to do something for him.
Are you about over my, where the ice cream place used to be? I'm thinking that lot where my dad's lot is and, you know.
It's, there's still not a permanent solution. What if, what if, what if I don't get along or if my neighbor doesn't get along with the person that owns that property?
Still parking.
You know, it's not, it's not a good solution. I'm not saying I don't get along with anybody. I'm just saying, you know, you're, you're saying, you're still saying to me, "Well, work something out."
Paul, the village parking lot, as far as I know, has never been full. There've been people parked there, but never been full. The village parking lot.
Well, it's still not, it's, it's.
It's not feasible, because if he has an emergency, one of his kids, he needs a car, he's got to run the hell over to the village's office. Well, let me ask you something. The state plow comes by, and I've seen it, plows his car right in tight, I was going to get out. And it happens. And I know you've seen it.
I like the village.
No, but honestly, I haven't seen, I haven't seen that in the village.
I mean, you're only a half a block from the village parking lot to your house. I mean, so it's not like it's really, you know, I mean, it's plowed and everything. What's wrong with that?
You mean to park in the village parking lot?
Yeah.
What is the village policy on parking in the parking lots?
You can park there. There's no policy.
There is no policy.
Not in what I know of.
Now, when, let's say, for instance, Mr. Duffy and his family or the people that are over at, anywhere's on Lake Street, they're gone away and they have two vehicles and now the, the village can't get in to clean it.
You ever had a problem with that, Brian?
We go in, in between the cars and we kill them. We try to at least open until they get in and out.
Your state over.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's the best thing, the one in the village parking lot.
I don't know. If you want to change the policy board, it's not a problem. I mean, but the problem being is.
Well, I think we need to consider, though, we need to consider our liability if we're allowing village residents to park their cars overnight in the village parking lot. I think that could become an issue. Because it sounds like there are several people that you were talking about. So you're talking, just in your little stretch where you live, you've mentioned several cars that would need to be parked there, correct?
Through the course of the years, I think you would find that you would, you could have anywhere from, I would say, five to ten cars in the Dollar General parking lot on winter's night. That, that's just our little section from, from what was the Holland to Mrs. Martell's. You know, it's a very short section. So you've got upwards of ten cars right there. I don't know about the other end. I don't know about all the apartments.
But in this area, the hardship was really created by Mr. Palmero asking you not to park there.
No, the hardship is caused by the law that says we can't park in front of our homes when we were able to for seventy or fifty years. If not Mr. Palmero's fault.
But this isn't the first year the law has existed, is what I'm saying.
No, no. And to this point, I have been the good citizen and I haven't said anything and I've just tried to accommodate it, but it's better bear. I'm telling you, if you, you can't, the parking lot, you don't put your car there early in the night because they have store hours. So these cars aren't all over there early. So I've always taken the car over very late at night. And then train hands come down and they park, or they plow at six o'clock in the morning, six-thirty. I've been over that early for twenty years, winter snows and when they come down to get that car out of there.
A little aggravating, to say the least. Then go to the village parking lot and you want to move it. But if you didn't want it, leave it there. As long as you don't block the driveway, you go in, park it out of the side so we can run it out through.
The other, I would say, in those twenty years, when you moved your car from the parking lot across the street back to your residence, how many times has the village cleared that out in front of your residence before six o'clock in the morning?
Village? Working day. There, there was a stretch, I think, when the village came out, a number of years, they haven't done it for a number of years, where they, I think they were actually out before six o'clock. I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, but there was a stretch, a few years, where they were getting, I thought they were getting out rather early. They haven't done it for years. They, for the last number of years, they've, they've, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they come out and they start at State Street. They go in front of the restaurant, in front of Sandy's Old Time Cafe, they get that stretch cleared. And for whatever reason, a little farther than that, maybe over the park, they stop and then they'll have to come back in the middle of the day and they'll, they'll clean some more, they'll come back later on in the morning and clear some. But they always seem to get that stretch cleared early and, and again, not, not real early and not before the six o'clock when the ban goes off. So in other words, all those cars can be back there.
And that's true.
To, to do in front of my house early, no. They're, they're doing it a little, something before eight o'clock at times, but very often mid-morning.
Sometimes after nine. They, they do the business, you know, like the restaurant, Sandy's and the cafe, the people that are coming in for the coffees and in and out traffic.
It's pretty much on the schedule because I watch it daily.
Back when the Holland was running, we used to do that quite early in the morning also. And we usually start at five-thirty.
I'd like to see a permanent solution. If you're considering that, the village parking lot, does that include the civic center here?
There's no reason why you couldn't park here either.
Well, that's what I meant, pointing over there, I mean here. Does that include this area?
I think we need to look at.
Firstly, I still don't consider.
As a temporary, as a temporary, there's no problem.
Well, my understanding was, though, that we didn't allow overnight parking.
In the parking lots?
That's right. That's my understanding.
No, there's nothing in the, that I know of in the law.
It's not allowed.
Both lots we don't allow.
I don't believe we allow it in any of our laws.
It doesn't really.
We need permission.
Carol, come on, can you look that up?
It doesn't really, it doesn't.
That's Holland's temporary, it's temporary.
Right, well, I don't, that's what I'm saying. I don't think we're going to come up with a permanent solution.
The best permanent solution I can think of is the, are the flashing lights that tells the people, the village, that they cannot park their cars on the street. If it works in the cities, Plotsburg broke it. If it works in the cities, I don't know how it could possibly not work in the village. I, you'd have to, you'd have to talk to me and make me understand why it would work in a city where, where things are very tight and, and it wouldn't work here.
I didn't say it wouldn't work. Just, but, take the money.
Understand, I understand that. But the only thing I say of that is, is I've suffered for twenty years not having a place to park. It's because of that and that's fine. Is that the only reason we don't do it? The, the money issue. And, and I'm not the only one. It's still hardship, not only for the people on Lake Street, but I'm sure there's other people in the village that would like to be able to park in front of their home at night. Not that they need to, because most of them have driveways left. But it has created the hardship for, for, I would say, especially the downtown area and resident is there. You have quite a few tenants down, downtown.
Do you want to come forward? You want to look at it? See what we can do?
Let's check the regulations.
We can't do anything tonight, that's for sure.
Definitely make it into consideration. Work on it.
Work on it. Get back to you.
Meanwhile.
I appreciate that. In the meantime, I have Christmas shopping to people.
Well, please go and know what you get.
Is there any questions I?
If you're getting presents, don't forget the village board.
He's related to the governor of Illinois.
I didn't, I wasn't asking, was I asking? I just said, "Don't forget it."
Whatever.
I'll leave my shoes on. Hey, hey, you're hearing me. Is that a size ten you're wearing?
Good night, Paul.
Good night. Any else? If not, do have a chat at the end of the meeting. Bid results contract two thousand eight oh seven, Donovan Warner Library. Nobody bid.
So what about you?
Well, we're going to push to the spring. The reason why I didn't bid is because the extra cost of heating, putting up the stuff to heat for the bricks. It's winter, what they call winter bidding. Because it adds the cost of just.
It always took so long to get a bid. We were talking about this last year.
Well, we, what we didn't do is to get a set of specifications. I had asked, Brian. Brian said, "I just don't have the expertise to pull out a set of specifications on that building." So.
Well, I really didn't know what the scope of the project was, you know? I didn't know if you're getting grant money, if you had, you had to have a plan, stamp from engineers. I mean, it's.
So we, we got Duffy's architect to draw up the scope, came up and looked at it, drew up the scope. And that was only what, last month, for, just before we went out to bid.
Do we know of firms who are interested in bidding that were put off by the weather?
Well, yeah. The few people, the few contractors that I talked with was, they told me you'll have more money in building a shelter and keeping it at this certain temperature for so many days that more than what the project would cost. So that was their concern. I know two of the contractors told me that.
Last summer, when the guy was pointing the bricks at the, at the police station.
Yes.
He was supposed to go over that and do something. He never did. He gave us a quote.
I don't think he ever gave us a quote.
I don't either, do you think? That guy just couldn't work till silly to work. Because all I know is that Andy, Andy passed it on to me. He said, "What happened to it?" And I said, "I don't know." So he started questioning. He said, "Well," and that's when I talked to Brian, so I called Duffy. He said, "You've got an architect." And I said, "Yes." "You get him up here and get us a set of specifications as fast as you can." And we did out to bid.
And let's rebid it and something in the spring.
Not all you can do, really. Rebid it in the spring.
Yeah.
They're saying it's costing too much.
That's what we'll do. We'll go out to bid in the spring. And if it's warm, then they go out and march. By the time it goes out and comes back, comes back in the April. In the April. It'll be May before they get started. Yeah, it will be. All righty. Bid results of contract, or no, bid results of surplus items.
Want to read it?
Yeah, please.
I don't, I, I want to see it anyway. The following bids were received. The nineteen ninety-three Ford Tempo, there was one bid received from John Bernard in the amount of three dollars and seventy-five cents. The other one was nineteen eighty-seven GMC Dump Truck, Dragoons Farm Equipment. The bid amount was three thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. Those were the only two bids.
I'll make a motion to accept the Dragoons Farm Equipment, bid of thirty-six eighty-five.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker, any discussion?
Is that a satisfactory amount?
Over three thousand we asked.
Okay. Fine.
There being any discussion, a normal discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. On the ninety-three Tempo, it's a surplus item. It's a declared surplus. I don't think we need a motion on this, or maybe we do. We need a motion to reject that bid.
I'll make a motion to reject that bid.
Second.
Moved by trustee Pampfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And I suggest that we call the nearest junk dealer, hadn't come to get it, but they found to get thirty-five bucks for it.
That's Johnny wants it, thirty-five.
I don't think so. I don't, do we need a motion knockout to have a junkie come and get it? It's a declared surplus. It costs thirty-five bucks to drive up here and get it, so would that be a?
I'm wondering, can we, can we even make a couple of calls and see if we can do any better on that?
I was going to say, you should really set your price at thirty-five. The guy wants to give you seventy-five.
Well, no, I'm just saying, that's what the going prices are talking.
What are they going for, a junk car?
Well, if I don't get out of the market, then like you said, if somebody comes to pick it up, I would just go, like, was the old guy going to pick it up and take whatever you can get?
Yeah.
I don't know how much gas is in it, but more than three dollars per cent for the gas.
Take a couple of calls and see, you know.
By the time you get out of the tank, waste your three dollars and thirty-five cents.
Exactly.
Nobody wants it because they've got to put a transmission in it.
But outside, that's in good shape.
Oh, yeah, just been during back and forth to church. Yeah.
Probably in good shape. It was all rust.
You have met us at a previous meeting. Well, is there any deletions or additions? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting as presented.
Second. Moved by trustee Burt, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, vote by the majority, side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Any additions or deletions?
We have one addition, F.I.A. Card Services, it's a credit card company. Thirty-five dollars and fifty cents for Christmas flags for the gazebo and one eighty, one fifty for conference expenses for the water plant, to the water conference. For a total of two seventeen.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight as amended.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burt, any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, vote by the usual side of aye.
Aye.
Well, those opposed, motion carried. Okay, correspondence. Thank you. Report to the mayor and trustees. First thing on my agenda is announcement. The village has low energy or home heating tune-up kits available if you meet the eligibility requirements of income. And it's all you got to do is come in, the village proves that, and they'll give you the kit. The kit includes silicone caulking for the doors and windows, weather stripping for door sleeves, compact for us in vogs, hot water temperature gauge and refrigerator thermometer, wall switch gasket outlets, shrink pit window kits, low, low, low massage shower head. Wow. Massage, brother. Faucet adapters, LED nightlights, rope caulk and random test kits, energy guidebook for help saving a tip, a tip for the home and a bag. So if you, if a family of two has an income of less than four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars a month, they can get a kit. And a family of three is four ninety-eight, and a family of one is three thousand seven hundred and seventy-six.
No, you're wrong. You're wrong.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading. Yeah, one thousand one ninety-six for one. Four is three thousand. A family of six, four thousand dollars. Yes, it is. Next thing, the next thing on my agenda is discussion generator for senior housing. Had this last power failure affect the last two power failures. We had this last power failure, in fact, the last two power failures, uh, there were some problems there. Uh, people got caught in the bathroom, some got caught in the bathtubs, uh, elderly people.
Right.
They didn't jump with the oxygen, too.
And there's two or three that have oxygen that they could not fill their mouths. Yeah. So I talked to the manager, Mr. LaBunny, and I said, well, maybe the village can get you a generator. And I called my clients from I E. B., he said, not a problem. He said, you send us the specifications, we'll bid it for you. Uh, we'll have a ship there, and I said, I told LaBunny, if the village does this, it's on one condition. You people are responsible to put it in and maintain it. And so I, he gave me a number to call in Buffalo, uh, and I called him today, and he said, he didn't think he would have a problem of putting it in and maintaining it. He said, how big is this thing? I said, well, it'll light the whole, it'll take care of the whole place. What? He said, I expect a little one. I said, no, it'll take care of the whole place. I said, uh, so, uh, it's up to the board, if the board wants to approve it. It'll come out of I E. B. and money. And along with that, while you're talking about it, there's two other projects that are coming out of I E. B. New windows for in here, the outside windows here in the, uh, other room. We got a broken one over there, uh, they cannot buy window, can't buy replacement. And these here are badly needed repairs, so we got a quote, I think it's, I wanna say sixteen hundred dollars for everything, for the windows. And, uh, I E. B. said, get them, send us the bill.
How much you think the generator will cost?
Thousands of dollars.
Can you eat them real big, or like that, though? Why can't we just, like I said to Johnny.
Hey, what difference does it make? It, it puts the heat in the building, that's what you're gonna need, you know?
Yeah, but if we had the power go off and you bring everybody and they got a big community room like this, and you put the heat on in there, and you got the lights on in there, you know, I mean, I just think it's a little bit over. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of putting a generator there, but, you know.
How many people do we have living in senior houses?
Four, eighteen, 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 there's eighteen units and they're full.
Well, how many have special needs?
Special needs.
Yeah.
And again, they can't fill their, they, they have a, I don't know if you.